So how are things? Family good?
Yeah. Yeah, they're doing well.
Hey, we missed you at the game last week. Is everything all right?
I, uh... I just haven't been feeling like me lately.
Okay. You know I'm here for you, right? And there's support too.
That's a cut! Beautiful, fellas. Beautiful. Acting is one thing. Talking about suicide in real life is another.
In the military, you take challenges head-on.
And now it's your turn to do the same for our veterans.
Be there for someone you care about.
Learn how you can start the conversation at bethereforveterans.com.
Thumbs up! 30 seconds.
Why? We're still sitting.
Well, we gotta stand for the pledge anyway, so just keep standing.
That's true.
So you wanna go at 7:00 or do you wanna wait?
No, we're gonna go at 6:30, yeah.
Oh, 6:30, sorry.
Give me a countdown.
Okay, hold on.
Marty just said don't tell us to wait. He's not here. Marty's not here today. I know. He's not even here.
There's confusion.
Because they're pulling up.
All right, we have plenty of things on our agenda that we can get done before they get here. Not waste time.
All right, stand by.
There we go. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 14th, 2020 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. There's a little legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclosed they are doing so. Anybody? No, thanks. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have correspondence? We have a memo from Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at C-TAC dated December 2019 regarding the Walter K. Quigley Jr., Student of the Month Awards for December 2019. Long Meadow student honored this month was Joseph Klezak, Building Property Maintenance; Austin Munson, Graphic and Visual Design II. And our second correspondence is an email dated December 29, 2019, from Mr. Pete Landen regarding HVAC issues. Great. We have approval for some minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the December 10th, 2019 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's a non-call for vote, all in favor. Opposed? One abstention. Uh, any visitor comments? Okay, seeing none. Any school committee announcements or recognitions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we do have business with guests today. We are expecting Senator Lesser and Representative Ash. Thank them both. Oh! Hi, gentlemen.
You're on time.
All right. That is impeccable timing. She's, uh, have a seat. And, uh, we've invited them both to, uh, to our meeting tonight. Very honored to have them here. Thank you both for being here.
Nice chairs.
Good. Things have changed for us.
I know. Guys obviously don't need any money. Look at this.
Is that the next thing, what's happening about town chairs?
Yeah.
So, um, brought them both. I don't know if you guys want to start or you just wanna... Do you wanna say hi?
Well, yeah, well, um, thanks for having myself, Senator Lesser, here. We're, uh, we're happy to be here and answer any questions or probably more appropriately just have a conversation about, um, the SOA and as well as Prop 2 and 1/2 and where that brings us and what our options are and what direction collectively we need to go in. So we're here to answer questions, but more so probably just to discuss where we're at and, and what this means for all of us. I mean, we both live in Long Meadow, um, so we're hoping this is more of a collaboration team effort. And, uh, I'm not sure what individuals or collectively you guys know already or what questions may have. So we're here as a resource to answer and probably have a few questions around...
Yeah, no, Mr. Chair, I will. We'll just open it up straight to questions because I think that's probably more constructive. If you give us the mic to speak openly, we'll be here till tomorrow morning. So, uh, I, there's nothing going on in education policy to talk about. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll give it back to you and, uh, we'll just take questions as, uh, as they come.
Great. I love, I mean, very informal, um, you know, and so I'll open up to questions from the board.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thanks for having us.
Can I get it started?
Yeah, great.
You know, I think, um, the discussions around this table in, in recent months have focused on the Student Opportunities Act and, um, you know, what, what, um, changes that might bring for us. And I'm not sure the dust has totally settled on that. Uh, but I think we're all curious to understand from your perspective what that might mean for education in general and maybe what it might mean for, um, Long Meadow Public Schools. I think there's a, you know, I know, I think in my view, there's a significant upside to the Student Opportunities Act. I think it's, it's, it was long overdue. I was really appreciative to see it pushed through the legislature and I know you were both behind it. Um, I think our, our teachers were happy to see that that legislation was passed as well. So any reflections or thoughts you might have on the Student Opportunities Act and, and what it means for education and what it might mean for us?
Yes, um, I think we'll both share. First, I think, as you mentioned, Marty, this has been something, it's been a long time coming. I know even before when I was on the Select Board, we talked about Chapter 70 and the inequities and across the Commonwealth. And we've been looking for a way to make it more equitable, make sure towns like Long Meadow and frankly, all 351 cities and towns, to make sure that they had the proper funding they needed, uh, for their schools. And as we have 351 cities and towns, we have 160 state reps and 40 senators, there's also with that 200 different opinions on how these things work, as well as teachers from different districts, whether the regional, city, rural. So there is no straightforward answer saying this one size fits all, but I think where we're at with the SOA, it's at least a, a great step in the right direction. And although it won't answer all of Long Meadow's problems, we're still behind in other things based on part of the formula, but it will help us as we talked before, when you talk about retirees, when you talk about healthcare, when you talk about SPECT, those are things we should be able to see an immediate increase in the town of Long Meadow.
Uh, yeah, so just to echo off, uh, what, what Rep Ash said, um, I mean, I think probably admittedly, the Student Opportunity Act was not entirely geared towards the Long Meadow districts. But that being said, uh, the two key areas where I do think you're gonna see the most sort of upside for Long Meadow are the recalibration on healthcare costs, which is a very big deal and was frankly underappreciated in 1993 when the first budget, uh, you know, the first formula was written. So I think pay attention to where your healthcare cost reimbursement lines come in, uh, in the next few years. It's a seven-year phase in. And then the other is the special education reimbursements, in particular out-of-district placements and a few other areas. Um, I mean, those two elements of the formula when they were written in 1993 just did not adequately take into account inflation, cost increases, uh, everything else. The other thing I would just say on Student Opportunity Act is it is a seven-year phase in. Um, we did get consensus revenue estimates in the Ways and Means Committee this past week that are now putting our, uh, the consensus estimate for state revenue growth at 2.8%. So we came in actually well above consensus revenue last year, which is why we had a supplemental budget that was able to plug a lot of holes. Um, if the 2.8% holds, we should be on track to at least do year one of the seven years to, to fully phase in. So, um, you know, the way I like to describe the Student Opportunity Act is it's a sort of promissory note and now we have to cash it year after year based on the, uh, based off the revenues that come in. But the 2.8% was, you know, decently good news from the, uh, very good news actually from the consensus revenue hearing. So, um, so I think year one, uh, you know, knock on wood, should be good. And I think for Long Meadow in particular, keep an eye on healthcare, uh, the healthcare formula elements and the special ed.
And I think what was important too in the SOA, it's not just here it is, this is set in the next seven years. There's a mechanism in there where it's being studied throughout. So if something comes up along the way saying, boy, this didn't translate out when we were coming up with this formula, there's opportunities to stop and say, you know what, maybe this needs correction, maybe this needs to go in a different direction, which I think is important that we're not just stuck here for good or for bad for the next seven years.
So I guess I'll, uh, chime in then too. Uh, you know, first off, I wanna say thank you to both of you for being so accessible because I can say with, uh, any hesitation, when I've called both of their offices, I've either talked directly with Senator Lesser or with Representative Ash. But not only that, you both have outstanding offices backing you up, which you should be proud of.
Don't let Joel hear that.
Uh, you know, in your office, both Stephanie and Joel have been invaluable to, to us to get information. I talked to Joel Friday and we've had conversations about some things. Um, and then on your side, Robin's been, you know, just, yeah, knocking it out of the park. So, um, so I guess from, from my perspective as a, as a chair and just a member, one member of the board, it's refreshing to be able to have that kind of contact to, 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 you know, get in touch with you, the things that are affecting us. As you know, it's Long Meadow, there's no shortage of people who are also contacting us to contact you. I guess, you know, from both of you, like, how do you see the, what is your perspective on how a citizen can best let you know what's going on, you know, or what they have concerns about that's important to them, you know, such that we can hear it, but, you know, you need to hear it as well?
I mean, directly calling us, emailing us, calling our offices, which, you know, a lot of people do already, um, but we get calls every day or emails every day. And that's, that's the best way. That keeps us, you know, in tuned with, you know, the things that maybe we don't hear day-to-day, but if people call us, you know, whether it's you guys or constituents directly calling or emailing us saying, hey, this is going on, we have concerns about this, that's what kind of keeps us in tune with the hot topics are. I mean, unless it's in the news or something, but the hot topics in town or something that's coming up, people start calling you on it, you know, that, all right, there's a concern here. And that's probably the best way.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, you know, I would, I would say, um, actually, don't underestimate how much we appreciate, uh, you know, constructive feedback and comments. Your emphasis on constructive, yeah. Uh, I mean, I think, um, you know, obviously, no one likes when people are rude, but 99% of the correspondence we would get, I'd actually say is, is very constructive and on point. And, um, and is actually frankly very helpful. So, um, people shouldn't, you know, hesitate, they can call, they can email. I mean, I personally really like, um, as much as possible, sort of face-to-face meetings because I think you can, um, you can get a lot, obviously, it can become logistically sometimes hard because we're in Boston or something, but, you know, a well-crafted thoughtful email, it does get rad. I, I promise it gets rad. Um, in our office, we make a big priority out of that. And, uh, you know, we do do office hours, uh, you know, and Robin and, um, and Joel do them together. And we try to come as much as possible at the Long Meadow Senior Center. And then, you know, it's also by appointment because we get that people work and office hours are hard. So it's email, it's, I'm on Twitter. We try, I try to avoid Facebook comments for, uh, for engaging and back and forth, but, um, uh, it's really all of the above. But I would really say actually, like, I would actually encourage people, if they have, you know, a thought on something, to share it with us because, you know, don't assume that we necessarily know.
Yeah. Or that we have a certain viewpoint on something because we take, a lot of times, unless it's something we know a lot about, we take our cue from the public, you know, and then we'll do further investigation.
Any questions, concerns? Oh, Kevin.
So, do you mind if we shift to the Prop 2 and 1/2 thing?
No, 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 I was gonna shift there too, but since you're going there, good.
Time's up.
Yeah. So, I mean, I feel like the, the Select Board has done a really good job trying to educate the town about what's going on and to recognize that the ceiling is different than the Prop 2 and 1/2 tax levy and all that stuff. And I don't know if everybody in town knows what's going on at the level that, that, you know, we do based on the stuff we've heard from the Select Board, but I just wonder if you could give us your take on where we're at, at the state level. I mean, it just, the things the Select Board says are terrifying if we get to that point. And I don't know if we should be terrified or if you see like, no, 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 there's a light here, it's gonna take us maybe a couple of years to get there, or like, no, you should really be terrified.
I'd like to say somewhere in between terrified and, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Um, we're gonna hit the, you know, the ceiling, uh, the estimates are fiscal year 2024. So right around the corner. And what that means, I mean, tough to explain it quick if people are watching at home, but you can only raise so much money, you know, per thousand dollars value at home. When you hit that, you know, we're out of luck. So one of the possible scenarios is filing legislation to lift, uh, lift the cap. Um, not everybody will want that because it, you know, it gives opportunity for the towns to tax more. So it's a concern, it's a major concern. And I think that's something collectively, this isn't something Senator Lesser and myself or, or the rest of the legislature are just gonna come up with. This is gonna be people going back to their constituents, going back to their, their school committees, their Select Board councils and trying to come up with some creative solutions, what we can do. And that's where you gotta think outside the box, regionalization where you can, any ways to save money because it, if we just kept it the way it is and kept moving forward and hit the ceiling, we, there would be cuts, you know, whether it's teachers, police, fight, you know, there would be cuts throughout the community, especially a town like Long Meadow is unique to a lot of other communities. And we're gonna be one of the first, if not the first, to hit the ceiling. And probably not the time that, you know, I'd like Long Meadow to be a first. You know, you'd rather see other towns go through it so you can figure out what they did and work from their mistakes. So this is gonna be something we're gonna have to sit down and have a lot of discussion, all of us, and figure out what the best possible course of action is.
Yeah, so, um, I have a lot of thoughts on this. I'll take it in a couple, in a couple turns. You know, first, I, just zooming out for a second, while Long Meadow is probably facing this in potentially the most extreme and in the most immediate way, uh, this is actually like a, a pretty significant regional issue that all of our communities in Western Mass are facing. And I would just point out that the dynamics of how Prop 2 and 1/2 have worked are really structurally unfair to Western Mass because, uh, in communities where you have either flat or in some cases even declining property values, relatively built-out communities and contractually obligated increases, inflation, you know, even if you keep the budget as tight as possible, there are certain things that are always gonna go up, healthcare costs, whatever it is. The only way to get more revenue in a scenario like that is to raise rates. And I'd point out that what has actually ended up happening as a result of this dynamic is that, um, you know, Springfield and Holyoke pay a higher property tax rate than Weston or Newton. Uh, and that is really very unfair and, um, you know, could, should really like shock people's conscience. So, you know, some of what we've really been doing is, is consciousness raising at the State House. Of the list of 50, of, if you ranked every single city and town in Massachusetts by property tax rate, not the dollar figure of the amount, but the rate, uh, the top 50, I believe 40 of the 50 are west of Worcester. So this is a really region-wide issue. And so I think this is a little bit longer term and zooming out and then I'll get more of micro at Long Meadow in a second. But, you know, one of the things we've been working on is, is working with really a group of the Western Mass legislators on changing the underlying structure to how, uh, how this is working. So, um, Joe Comerford and I, during the, during the Student Opportunity Act debate, we filed an amendment to have the Department of Revenue basically study this exact issue and to come back to us with some recommendations for, you know, whether it's changing the, um, you know, the minimum aid or, or whatever it might be, to, to give us just some options, some policy, you know, some policy options to come back to change this, this underlying issue. And it passed the House as well. Um, Brian was a big supporter of it and, um, and so was really the whole Western Mass. Because again, it's a Western Mass, it's really a west-of-Worcester issue. Um, so medium to longer term, we've got to do that. Uh, the other thing I would just point out is that this is a symptom and a function of low economic growth rates. You know, when property rates, when property values are going up like they are in Eastern Mass, you can actually cut the rate and collect more money. So I think, you know, the, the bigger picture thing we need to be doing is, is, is getting our property values higher, which is, you do that by bringing jobs and bringing investment. And so the wider menu of things we're working on, Brian and I were just at a plastics, uh, a plastic factory, Toner Plastics in East Long Meadow today, talking about bringing more manufacturing and job investment into the region. I actually view that as related to this issue because the more business you've got opening, the more jobs you're attracting, the more demand there's gonna be for houses, the higher the property values will go and you'll, you, you won't have this issue with the, with the, with the levy ceiling. And, and rail, I would point out, would be a part of that as, as well. Uh, but then, you know, specifically to Long Meadow, you know, we're prepared to do what the town, um, you know, through some type of consensus building, um, wants us to do. Uh, you know, so if there's a, if there's a home, a home rule option or, you know, or legislation, you know, I think we're prepared to do that. Um, there needs to be a mechanism for kind of determining if that's what the town wants to do. Um, and that's really up to all of you and the Select Board and, and town meeting or whoever. But I, I would just sort of point out, and I, I think it'd be remiss if we didn't think about this in a little bit of a bigger picture, we will continually have to raise the levy cap if we don't get this broader issue under control. Because even if we raised it, you know, and I don't know if it necessarily is a good idea to raise it, I, I pay property taxes in this town too. It's a very high-tax town. Even if we raised it four, five years later, if we don't get this underlying economic situation resolved, we're gonna have to raise it again.
It's really just a Band-Aid.
So, right. It's, so, you know, so we, we don't wanna see cuts, we don't, you know, you know, obviously both of us are, are committed to that, but I, I think it's like, we've gotta kind of walk and chew gum at the same time. We need to think about what the sort of short-term solutions are in the next one, two, three years. But I think we've gotta also be thinking about the sort of underlying economic forces that have, that have led us to a situation where 40 of the 50 highest-tax communities in the entire state are in one geographic region, you know, of the Commonwealth. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a basic function of an economy that's evacuating frankly jobs and opportunity out of one area and just hyper-concentrating them, uh, in another.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point you're making about the balance of the tax rate versus, you know, the, the economic impact and trying to, to see what we can do to, to shore that up. You know, my biggest fear being on the Tax Safety Committee with Marty and a few others is always been the Band-Aid you're talking about. I get it gets us some extra runway, right?
Yeah.
But the other thing that's always concerned me is like, if I'm the representative or the senator from Concord, what's in it for me to, outside of a home rule, to try and do something on the state level? Because all it's gonna do is get like Max Taxpayer Alliance against me like, hey, they're raising our taxes again. And really, they're not. They're allowing the town to have their ability to raise taxes. But that's not the way that that legislature is gonna be painted and we can't get past hyperbole these days, right?
You're right.
In the conversations.
And that could keep some from wanting to vote for something.
Right. And, you know, and I hope that cooler heads prevail, like the kind of stuff you guys are talking about, to help everybody out.
Yeah.
You know, Band-Aid and long-term economic event.
So, so on that, I mean, just, just to develop that, I mean, at the risk of thinking out loud, and, uh, I mean, there, there are, there are things to do. So, and, and there actually has been a lot of good kind of thoughtful work already done. So just for example, we, the Student Opportunity Act concluded a six, seven-year process around rewriting the foundation budget review. Well, I, we have legislation in the Gateway Cities Caucus, which Brian's a member of with me, um, has legislation that we've supported within, with Chairman Cabral, Tony Cabral, to, um, to do the same thing for the local aid formula. You know, so just like the, uh, just like the, uh, you know, the school funding, Chapter 70 formula hadn't been changed since 1993, I'm not, I don't even know when, uh, the, the unrestricted local aid formula was, uh, was adjusted. And you could potentially see that rewritten reflect some of these realities of certain regions being disadvantaged versus other regions in terms of, uh, you know, smoothing out some of those imbalances. So that's one way to get at it. Another way to get at it is diversifying income streams. So like I, I have legislation around, um, uh, regional ballot initiatives. So what this would allow is to create kind of regional, um, you know, you know, ways to basically diversify revenue streams so that you're not so dependent on the property tax. So if a group of communities, let's say Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Hampden, Wilbraham, whatever, Springfield, Long Meadow, Agawang wanted to band together to create like a new district to, for example, fund transportation or fund road work, um, through, uh, through an alternative to the sort of legislative appropriations process, this would allow them to do that, uh, you know. So, um, so, uh, you know, I think we have to kind of be creative about both ends. We've gotta be creative about more state aid and the state aid being more reflective of realities on the ground that different regions are facing. And we need to be thoughtful about giving all of you and, and the Select Board more tools to be thoughtful about how you're able to raise revenue. Because right now, it's, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, it's the property tax. And if your town is built out and there's no more open space...
Long Meadow's been for quite a while.
And you have flat, basically flat property values, you're stuck. Uh, so, um, you know, so, and, and that could potentially even allow you to reduce property taxes because you would diversify where the, where the income is coming in. So those are just sort of off, just off the cuff, like a few things that I think we need some focused attention on. So I'm, I'm grateful that now that the Student Opportunity Act is done and the Chapter 70 rewrite is done, we can start looking at like the unrestricted, uh, local aid. Um, you know, another, another one I, you know, mentioned is, you know, the lottery, um, you know, potentially an online lottery, uh, you know, potentially adjusting or updating the lottery is, you know, another, another, another way, um, you know, another revenue source that communities rely on. So there's, there's, there's a lot of potential ideas. I just don't think it's gotten like the focus it needs yet, um, to, to start to put a plan in place. And it obviously needs to because we're dead and close.
Soon or good later.
Any other questions or concerns, comments?
Everything else is perfect? I would, I just would echo, uh, what, what Chairman Ray said earlier that, you know, how, um, accessible your offices have been to us, whether we're talking about funding issues or, uh, state mandates, DESI regulations, um, always super helpful in those areas. So I've always appreciated that. And, and I, and I, you know, probably, um, the aspect of the Student Opportunities Act that didn't get a whole lot of attention when the, when the press stories were released was that provision that you built into it to study the impact of 2 and 1/2 on, on Chapter 78. And that, that's just a, a home run for this community and I hope that something good can continue to come out of that. So that's great.
We will keep that in mind.
Absolutely. We appreciate, uh, you know, you guys input and everything as well.
Oh, one last, just sort of plug on, uh, you know, one thing that was included or that we've been working on from last year is the new civics, which I know Long Meadow has already been, but, uh, I do have my former history teacher here, so, um, you know, just, just, I just do wanna point out, and, you know, Long Meadow's already been well, you know, well ahead of the curve on this, but, um, you know, that, that also will represent, I do think, a, a new big change in education policy in the state. There's gonna be a new service learning component, uh, direct service component to high school curriculum. So, um, that actually also opens up a lot of great opportunities for kind of community involvement, getting, getting kids out in the schools, um, or getting, getting them out in the communities.
And the best part, best part about it, it's not linked to a high-stakes test.
Right, yeah.
It's linked to really good, authentic learning opportunities for kids in the community, which, which is excellent.
Yeah, so, and, uh, and so, yeah, I just wanted to give a plug to my former, my, uh, my former debate coach here, who, uh, was one of the inspirations for that.
I was his debate coach, but let's be clear, I only filled out the paperwork and arranged the schedule and got out of the way, so.
Yeah, we, uh, it's glad you brought, brought that up because I don't think enough can be said about when we had the teachers come and present what they wanted to do with this, how excited they actually were. I mean, Lori Schneider was like, yeah, coming out of her shoes. Like how excited she was about designing this and, um, you know, dude, you could just tell the excitement of like, hey, this is why I went into teaching, right? It wasn't to teach to a task, it was to get kids involved in the, to greater civics.
We had a few years where we got away from the real important part of teaching.
Right.
Helping the kids grow and get the most out of them.
So, thanks for enabling that.
Yeah, no problem, man.
Well, thank you both. You can't really do it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Marty, you have a report?
Uh, yes, there is.
Uh, yes, there is a report in your packet. And just to highlight a few items, busy calendar of events, January into February. We can talk a little bit later about some of the budget milestones that are part of that calendar. We want to make sure we don't forget that later on in the meeting. I would note, on January 29th, Special Programs Committee event, If They Had Known, it's a documentary film to alert parents to some of the dangers of party and culture that our kids are sometimes exposed to. So that's January 29th, documentary film at Long Meadow High at 7:00. Bunch of winter concerts still underway. Technology news, I wanted to note that town manager Lynn Simmons, Paul Pesterzic, Tom Mazza, Nick George and I are meeting to discuss what is called the Administrative Code. This is a document that governs the information technology services that we manage essentially on behalf of both town and school. So we're going to take a look at that document, review it, update it, and bring it back to the committee if necessary. And then I also wanted to note that we had an opportunity to take a tour through the main server room that hosts all town and school information systems. Armin joined us, Brownwin joined us. The server room is located essentially in the basement of Long Meadow High School. And with, in recent months, there's been more and more attention to information security and cybersecurity. The location of that room has come, come under some good attention. So we're just looking at some ways to ensure that, you know, we protect that head-end server room. And hopefully, we'll be back to you with some recommendations or thoughts on that. At some point, Brownwin had thought that if other members of the committee would like to take a visit to that room, you're more than welcome. Let us know. Happy to, happy to bring you down there. We have a PD day, a half PD day coming up, January 17th. We'll be focusing on student mental health and suicide prevention. It is a great opportunity for staff to be alerted to some of the warning signs for students who might be suicidal. But more generally, it will focus on student mental health and well-being. There is a copy of MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that we developed between the Long Meadow Police Department and Long Meadow Schools, governing the roles and responsibilities of our school resource officer. That document was developed in response to a state law that requires that districts and towns have an MOU on the work of a school resource officer. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know. We're really fortunate that Chief Stankowitz has, in his department, have been very, very supportive of a school resource officer over the years. And Pam Chaplin, who fills that role, does a great job and partners nicely with our principals. So I'm happy to have that MOU hammered out. Statements of Interest is on our agenda later. We can talk about that. And then I also, there's a bulleted list of some of the activities that are underway here in the district, some teacher study groups, some review committees. They're engaged in some work that might ultimately make it to the committee. Standards-based teaching committee at the middle school, we're going to get our handbook review committees underway soon. Grin spoon, excellence in teaching selection committee, elementary social studies textbook committee. We've got a group looking at tiered systems of support. And then our academic calendar for the 21, 22 school year is coming together soon as well. So the work of those groups might make its way to the committee. So if you feel like you need some information on any of those at any time, let us know. That's all I got. Yep.
Talk about the SOIs just a little bit.
Sure, yep.
So just so everybody understands where we are with the SOIs, and, and just from my understanding as well, because we met with, on, under the charge of the board, I met with Lynn and with Marty and Paul Pesterzic, Tom, I can't remember who, but we met on a couple of things. This was one of them, was the SOIs. We also met on the memorandum of understanding for the, for the technology as well. So acting under direction of the board, you know, we've gotten emails, whatever else. I can't act without, without any input from the board. One of the things that we talked about on the SOIs is where we are. And the question comes up, do we resubmit this year and hope that we get chosen next year? Versus do we do some kind of renovation at both schools quicker? And if you're looking at renovations at both schools, the issue becomes, you're looking at anywhere between $8 and $20 million for two aging schools to replace the roofs, to replace the boilers, the windows, doors, other things, at a cost out of the taxpayer pocket directly of $8 to $20 million immediately, against a levy, or not a levy, a rule by the select board that they do not want to absorb more than 12% of the tax levy in debt. So if we were to do something like that, we would go beyond that 12% immediately as a town, which then could possibly affect our bond rating. So that's the one consideration, like, can we do something like that? Yes, we can. There's a cost to it. You get renovated schools, but they're still the same old schools that are just up, you know, structurally updated a little bit. The other question that starts to enter then is if you think about spending that much money on two older schools, and I'm not prescribing we go either way. I think feasibility is the way to go. Tell us what the problem is, and then we, we find out. But the issue, the real issue becomes the potential for the state then to come in and say, you have exemptions for both buildings under ADA. Do those exemptions go away? And then do we have to spend even more money than X dollars to renovate and to do a real renovation, which could cost even more, right? Which could cost maybe, and I don't want to conjecture, but it could be a lot of money, right? Versus a timeline for the SOIs where if we were to submit in the spring of 2020, this year, and so we're having the tour so all the board members can see what we're up against, that then we're looking at, you know, April to December 2020, the MSBA is reviewing. Next December, they let the people know whether they've been accepted or not, like East Long Meadow was accepted this year. You know, feasibility study, I just talked to Bill Fonseca last week, you know, they still have another six months before they have to tell whether they're going to go, well, to fund the feasibility study, which then takes like another year. So if you look at Marty's timeline, but, you know, and the conversations we've had with finance and the schools, so far, it looks like if the timeline was to work out like we're talking here, the timeline works out such that other projects would have retired by that time, that now we're under that 12% figure, such that we could finance a project without endangering the bond rating or going past that prescribed 12% limit that was set by the select board. So just laying it out, it seems to me like the SOI is the smarter of the two ventures, or the more prudent of the two ventures. But I leave that to everybody to come to on their own as well. I just wanted to tell you what we talked about in that meeting, to the best of my understanding. And if you guys have any questions, you know, feel free. Yes, go.
So I guess I'm just curious to hear if this process is like some grant proposal processes where if you get yourself in the queue, as long as you keep coming back, you sort of raise higher in the queue? Or if it's when you submit, you're sort of, everybody's starting from the same place? Do we have any idea if we get a benefit of having been on their radar for a while?
I think there's a benefit to being on their radar for a while. They become more familiar with the needs of the buildings. So in that sense, the answer is yes. They would say that they start from scratch every year, that there is no queue, that there's no lot, you know. But I think the reality is that they become more and more familiar with the building. You become more and more persistent. The need grows year after year after year. And eventually, you know, you get approved. So my, my sense is that if you stick with it and you're persistent, you make your case well, that eventually the MSBA will partner with districts. I sense that we are in a better position, even though we didn't get asked into the eligibility period. I sense that we're in a better position with them this year than we were the prior year, than we were the prior year before that. You know, I think they've now come to see our schools twice with their senior study team, and they seem interested, you know. That's, they wouldn't, I'm not sure they would put it in those specific terms, but we're on their radar screen. I think you said it well. Yeah.
And so would this be the fourth year in a row if we put in, in this period?
Fourth year, maybe. And then, and then it goes back even, yeah.
Could be longer.
There was a gap, there was a time where we weren't submitting, but when, when, when the high school SOIs were being submitted, the town was submitting middle school SOIs at that time, right?
Of course. But then we stopped once we got the approval for the high school.
We did, and then I believe we started again and then had a hiatus for a year or two and then resumed. So I think this might be the fourth or fifth year that we would have submitted.
I'd say the MSBA has changed a lot, though, since the first SOIs were submitted back in whatever, 2008 or whenever it was, you know.
Yeah, we did 2008, 2009, 2011, 2050, and then 17, 18, 19, and 20.
If 20 would be this year, yeah.
Would be this year.
Is there, is there any, is there any detriment to conducting the feasibility study outside of this process? Just wondering if there's, if there's, if the town were to, you know, decide, hey, maybe we should just get the feasibility study done. Does that automatically get us out of the pipeline?
That's, I think it's a question that we should ask the MSBA.
Yeah.
My sense is that they want to be involved from the ground floor.
Right.
And you're more likely, you're less likely for them to participate and fund some of that feasibility study if you do it on your own.
Okay.
Because the feasibility study is subject to.
Their approval?
Subject to their approval, but it's also subject to reimbursement. So if you're in the pipeline, the feasibility study, which is a, which, you know, those are significant, they cost a lot.
Yes, yeah.
You'll be reimbursed, whatever percentage it is the grant is giving you.
Right. Just, yeah, it was just.
I could ask that, though.
Thought from a, from the standpoint of, yes, it's a costly venture, but it's not nearly as costly as the actual construction. So, you know, is that something that we could do ahead of time to sort of figure out what the issues are, besides what we already know?
A good side of that, I suppose, would be that you've got some really good data to include in an SOI. So, I mean, if the committee wanted, we could explore that further with the MSBA to see if we can get a firm answer.
Yeah. The only, the only thing I would think, and again, I have, like, the numbers we're talking about are totally hypothetical.
Yes.
So I think anything we can do to shore them up would be good. The only detriment I could see would be that funding it.
Yes.
Against the tax levy right now. And considering what's in free cash and operation stabilization, if it was outside of this timeline, I don't know if it would work for the town.
Right.
But I don't think it's a bad idea at all. I think knowing at least what baseline cost would be to renovate and have those confirmed would be awesome.
Because, yeah, we're still, you know, with, without the feasibility, I mean, that's, that's the thing. This process locks us into waiting to do that feasibility study and really have the actual information going forward versus could we do it ourselves? But again, that's just me thinking.
There was a study that the Town Commission originally is in like 2007, and it was revised in 2015 by J C J Architects.
Right.
So they, you know, but now that study is several years old.
Right, right. And that's what we're basing our submission on still.
Much of it, correct.
Right, with, with the understanding that we have our folks here who are giving us updates on.
Yes.
And with all the maintenance that has been done to simply maintain what we have.
Yeah.
That's just a, just a thought.
I like the question. I think it's a good one. I think I'd be curious, I'd like to think more about the implications of doing that, the timing of doing that, the MSBA's view of doing that. But I think it's a really good question.
Anything else? Any other questions about Marty's report?
So I know the, I suppose while we're on the topic, the SOIs, it is on your agenda later on. I think the question that we have right now for the committee is, maybe you do want to wait till later, but the question is, do you want to proceed, you want us to proceed with preparing a statement of interest? It would come back to the committee for approval, you know, probably, you know, end of February, probably. So I don't mean that maybe you want to wait till that comes up on the agenda, or you want to re-order the agenda.
We'll just wait for a couple minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Marty?
I have one question about the server room.
Yes.
Since it serves the entire town, whose general responsibility is it? I know it's housed here, but whose responsibility is the server room?
If the improvements of the server room is a capital issue, then it's, you know, go before the capital committee at some point. But if the improvements are sort of more maintenance-related, you know, it would come from our budget. The IT services are in the school budget. Tom, is it fair to say?
See, that's an accurate reflection of the expectations. I think fortifying the room, making it, protecting it as much as we can will probably require capital funding. We also are looking at potentially moving it to another site, location within the district. You know, there's a lot of considerations in terms of connections, wiring, other utilities in the area that might present the same type of hazards where it's currently located. And then, long-term, you know, what options might we have? The middle school was mentioned. If there ever is a middle school project, might it be considered to move and house it in a more suitable location within a new structure? So we do have an engineer looking at the various options and providing us some, some different avenues to consider.
I think that's important to point out, is that this isn't like an unknown issue. It was brought up by Nick six to eight months ago. He's been working with the town engineer for that time to consider alternative things as part of the audit committee process. They had asked Nick a question about, you know, what are some of the things that, you know, that he felt were risks? And that was one of the ones that he had self-identified, which then, you know, the tour was done and went off into everybody else. So it is an issue that's been known, that, that solutions have been drawn up for. I'm hesitant to overreact. I think we need to think what is the best cost-efficient solution for the town, because this is a town issue, this is a school issue. And, you know, not panic and overreact, you know, and give it the good due that Nick and his team have been giving it. So I think as directed by the board, when we met with Lynn and the town side on the MOU and some other things, you know, Marty and Lynn are working on making changes to the MOU as appropriate to update, because it hasn't been updated since 2012. And the other thing I think, you know, Tom was, I think I saw Tom's face over a little bit, but when Marty was talking about whose budget is it in, we really haven't, from a budget perspective, delineated town versus, town versus schools for budget purposes. So it's kind of in the school budget for IT, but it's not like we're charging back to the town for services we're providing or for computer infrastructure that we purchased. That's coming out of the pool of money for the, the school. So just from my budget planning perspective, going forward, just something that we were talking, probably needs to be thought about more than it has been since the. it has been since the MOU was created. Did I frame that properly?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So even though it serves the schools and the town, do you think it would be, it would fall under the schools for the payment?
Payment for what?
The fortification or, is that what you just said?
No. What I'm saying more is, like, just the normal operations of IT is totally being paid for within the school budget, not charging back to a department. In a enterprise entity, typically whoever is running your IT would then charge back services to the departments that are using the IT. We don't do any kind of chargebacks here. It's just in, we just absorb those costs. So if somebody needs a new laptop at Town Hall, Nick's just taking and paying for the laptop, and it's not getting charged back to any particular department, is what I'm saying. For what you're talking about, that infrastructure, yeah, if it's repairs or maintenance, like Marty said, yeah, I just think that would come out of the, the normal IT budget, you know, but depending on the dollar threshold, it might need to go to capital planning.
Yeah, I do think, I mean, again, if we're talking about building walls, the dollar threshold will probably dictate where it's coming from. Maintenance through the DPW would handle more of the less costly potential needs. For instance, making sure that it is kept at the appropriate temperature in terms of repairs to the HVAC system that services that area is something maintenance deals with, I'd say, on a regular basis, which comes out of the DPW budget, not the school budget.
Right.
For that expense.
But if there were a more ambitious plan, and that it reached a certain threshold, then it would be more of a capital expenditure.
Yeah, I don't think any operating budget on the school or town side probably has the ability to fund the type of enhancements that are going to be necessary for that current space, or to move it to a new location in town.
Right.
So I do think it would be an outside, a capital request.
So I have a question about, so the town's putting two new buildings online soon.
Yes.
So what, so first of all, what, is there an opportunity there?
Good question. The answer is no, because they're not on the, the main fiber highway.
So, and then my second question was, are they going to be, is that going to be adding to the servers here? Like, are we going to be housing those servers to those buildings here? Like, I'm just, I, I, it's just bringing up this, like, oh, so we have these two new buildings, so now are we, are we centralizing everything here and then putting all this stock in this place that probably needs to be addressed? It would seem to me that would be, you know, sort of on the town side, a capital side of things. I'm just thinking through that.
I, I don't know what the IT demands of the, of the new DPW or Council on Aging building will be. I'm not sure.
I mean, I do believe the DPW has a closet for...
Their own?
Yeah, for a server. I would say, again, the origination of the connection for our fiber and internet and all that is going to be through the main switch here at the high school, and then feed off to the other building. So we currently have DPW on, you know, servicing them.
Right.
I do, I don't know that the new buildings coming on are going to tax or add a lot more need or stress to the current operation.
But is there a...
Good question.
Yeah.
Very good question.
Is there a, a timeline for when we'll hear back on the options for the server?
I don't know that I have a specific schedule.
Okay.
I think we're, we've kind of limited the relocation options to, to help not make the scope so wide that it takes up a lot of time. So, but I don't know that I have a specific date when we expect to have some numbers to those various options.
Any other questions for Marty? All right. The only thing I have for the chair report is, before this public, well, it was public as well, but in A 12, we had a, a meeting with our attorney on the roles and responsibilities of the school committee, just for, for the new members and for the old, for the people who have been on for a while, they have gone through this as well. But just reinforcing what we've said for a long time now is that the role of the school committee is policy, budget, and hiring the superintendent. It's no more, it's no less. It's pretty simple. Day-to-day operations, discipline, rules, conduct, all fall under the purview of the superintendent and the principals, and things work better that way. So that's my report. Armin?
Yep. So because next Tuesday, the 22nd is during midterms week, we're changing the date where we meet with the school committee to the first meeting in February, which I believe is the 11th. And we plan to use the time to present our work on the parking lot situation with visuals. So because next week is midterms week, ice blocks, our students who have ice blocks have the opportunity to go to what is called a Zen Den. So that's where there is, there's a number of relaxation techniques that students can participate in. So they have, they bring in a therapy dog, they have yoga, coloring. So those are activities that students can participate in. And then the, the poetry out loud competition is on Thursday in the auditorium. So about 20 students will recite a poem of their choice, and about five winners will be chosen to recite their poems at the Pops concert on the 6th.
Perfect. Any questions for Armin? Thank you. L B V E C?
We have a meeting tomorrow evening, and Mr. Churchill is leaving this, this week, and we have some co-directors until the end of the year. So we'll be embarking on a search for a new director of the L B V E C to start July 1st, 2020.
Energy and sustainability?
Yeah, we actually have some good stuff for, for the board. So the, the main thing is that there was an energy audit done a while ago, and there were some potential opportunities that relate to the schools that we're hoping to do. And so those would not be the high school, would not be center school, but the other four schools have opportunities where I think it's, it's insulation, it's making sure the air envelope is sealed. So those sorts of, of projects, right? And we debated a little bit about the middle schools. Does it make sense? And based on this timeline, it definitely does, because the return on the town investment was under two years. And so the, the project is that the, the energy company pays 70%, the town pays 30%. Also part of the project, they would do some work at Town Hall and also at the current senior center, right? So the Greenwood, not the new building, but the old building. And so all of the work that they wanted to do was going to cost a total of $20,000 to the town, right? And again, that's only 30% of the work that would get done. And so it seemed to us that, thinking about how things play out at the end of the year, and I hope Tom will agree with me, I think there's some nodding a little bit, that, that I said that, it seemed reasonable to me that if we split the $20,000 in half, that the town could probably find $10,000 somewhere over the next six months in the budget, and the schools could find $10,000 somewhere over the next six months to fund that. And essentially what we agreed at the meeting was that we would want to recommend to the town manager that we move forward with this, and then we'll figure out how to pay for everything once we get actual budgets and figure out everything. So the town manager seemed reasonably happy with that as not a giant scope of a project, but something where we can actually do something, save the town money long-term, and find some funds. So again, you can tell me if you, if you don't like that plan, but that was sort of the recommendation of the committee, and the town manager is trying to move that forward.
Not center school because it's a historic building and...
No, I think that they just didn't identify any problems in center school.
Really?
Or it might have been the return on investment was too long.
Yeah, yeah, especially those workdays.
Center's been known to have some cavities without insulation that contribute to the ability to keep it temperature comfortable.
And it may have just been like, it was just too, it cost too much money.
Curious, not the high school either? Did they feel it was too new that...
Yes, yeah.
They might still want to take a look at it if there's opportunity.
And I think part of this was they did the audit several years ago. Like, this is not something that was a new audit.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure. It just seemed to us like this stuff's been sitting around for a while, and we're just like, can we please get this done? Because it's going to save us long-term money, and it just seemed like the, the right thing to do.
Was this the same part of the, the, the energy audit that we did all light bulbs, and we were sitting on that for a while, too? Is this the same, is it all the same audit that happened, or?
No, so similar program, and similar to the home opportunities you can have where they'll come out to an inspection and then make recommendations, and some of it may be totally free, and some of it may be you pay a portion of the cost.
Yeah.
So very similar type of program where the funding is through, but different audits that occurred, and I think by different entities in terms of the utility companies, is my understanding.
Kind of.
And the, the, sorry, I have a second one, but you want a question on that before we get to the second one?
Yeah, I was just thinking, since, since energy and sustainability is such a global, you know, such an important thing, is there any, did y'all talk about possible grants to pay for the $20,000?
So there, there is something called a green community that we are part of, and so it's entirely possible that that might pay for this. And I know that was something the town manager was going to look into, right? But yeah, there's, the, the way the green community program works, as far as I understand, is we recently became eligible for that because we did something to become a green community. That opens up, it's something like $150,000 of money that you can get reimbursed for doing anything that's sustainable in your community. And so this, I think, is clearly part of that. And I think we just said to the town manager, let us know if you think this is the right project for that, or maybe she's got some other ideas that are really big and she want to put the $150,000 towards it. It's not, those details are not clear to me, but I definitely agree, there is money out there.
Yeah, there's, I mean...
For stuff like this.
Okay, thank you.
Armin? Is there a timeframe, Kevin, and when you have to commit? Like, does the program run out?
What the, the person, I think it was Columbia Gas who was there, said that the reimbursement rates and the project funding is, is good for the entire calendar year.
Okay.
And so what we talked about is, they would only be able to do this work on, you know, a school vacation week or over the summer. And so it definitely, they were like, oh, yeah, we can definitely do that during those breaks. We would not do it when school is in session.
Okay, thank you.
So the second one was something that they talked a lot about, and I think is something that is on our radar, but I don't know how we actually solve this problem, which is, they commented on that the car lines that we have are incredibly bad for the environment, because I know that there's like, oh, don't idle, but everybody idles when they sit in the car lines and all that stuff. And so they talked about, are there ways that we could actually get rid of the car lines? And I told them that's a really difficult problem to solve.
That's a bad idea.
They thought we could do a lot more busing, and I said, that's really not an easy thing to do. So I, I think it's interesting, that's on the radar of the committee. I, I don't see how that's a problem that is going to be solved easily, and I'm not convinced that's a great way for everybody to spend their time, because it's just going to get people upset. And I don't think we're going to get to a solution.
I can tell you the pitchforks will be up. That's not a good idea. I mean, I agree, like, enforcing the idling makes a ton of sense. Getting rid of car line is not going to go down well in this community.
People enjoy car line?
That's a different question.
Never had to do it. Go to work too early and come back too late. I was never involved. So just curious, it doesn't seem like something people are sticking up for.
Tell me.
No? I'm wrong?
Can attest to that.
Maybe you like car line?
Lovely, it's blast.
All right, sorry, my bad.
I agree, I don't recommend it. Recommended, it's fine. I just, I just think that's a third rail issue, but...
I think our time is better spent on other energy and sustainability issues.
Or asking for idling to be enforced or reinforced.
Yeah, no, it's a good, a good opportunity to remind people that you don't need idle. If you're going to sit your car there, just turn it off. That's what we got.
Okay. Finance sub?
You want to start off, or you want me to?
Sure, finance sub. We met last night. We had a lengthy meeting, I would say. So there are a couple items on tonight's agenda. I think budget was probably the biggest, the FY21 budget was probably the topic that we spent the most time on.
And realistically, we, we at this point have gone through it at a pretty high level, pretty detailed level, and gone through all the puts and takes, both from the town levels, what their, our appropriation is, but also, you know, internally about what we think is going to be changing, you know, from attrition to changes in courses and things like that. And the committee gave their input and really vetted it for, for quite a while last night, and, and gave some really good thoughts and ideas around all of that, to a point where it's in a probably a pretty decent spot to where, you know, the next committee meeting, we're going to be, you know, ready to really let the whole committee take a look at it with all of the detail around it and give their input.
Yeah, so I would say, based on last night's meeting, we probably have some direction now on to finish the pieces we need to. We'll be, based on tonight's discussion about our public hearing, we'll be publicizing when we're going to hold it with some initial information about what's in the budget. And then, as Jamie said, we'll plan to present for next Wednesday, the 22nd, the superintendent's recommendations for the FY21 budget.
Yeah, and in reality, everybody should feel really confident about both what Tom and Dr. O'Shea kind of have that budget to where it is, and some very thoughtful, you know, pros and cons of different adjustments within there. So they put tons of time in, and I don't, I don't think it, it's obviously going to require everybody else to take a look at it and give their thoughts, but it's, it's in pretty good shape initially. I just think there's, you know, really just finalizing it within the overall committee. But I think you'll, you know, be good with looking at it and giving your opinion.
So on your school committee agenda, there is a consent agenda. We did have a building use request, which is what the consent agenda is, and the finance subcommittee did recommend the request.
Yes, do you have a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the consent agenda for January 14th, 2020.
Motion, is your second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, no discussion. All fair.
And so also as part of last night's meeting and included in your packet is an FY20 budget projection, so a year-to-date budget report with a projection as to where I anticipate we will go from now until June 30th. I think as with most of my reports, budget reports, I say subject to change. Best guess at this point with the information that we have available to us. So I think to Kevin's previous report about looking for an opportunity to potentially fund these projects, I do believe we will be able to identify if the $10,000 is needed to assist in those, those energy conservation opportunities. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I would say we're, we're tracking pretty well for FY20. I think some of the projections that are in this year's budget report are considerations we're taking into the 21 budget development in terms of what we're seeing and where those opportunities are to maybe offset some of the increases that we're anticipating in the FY21 budget. But I'm happy to answer any questions either now or if they come up at a later point, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Just the one line on long-term subs, is that, was that anticipated, or is that just from stuff that was unanticipated?
I don't know that I ever anticipate what long-term subs will, will do.
Wait, and does that include maternity leave?
It does, but we don't necessarily always know how many of our staff are going to be out for any period of time, whether it be maternity or any other health issues that might keep them from coming to work. So...
Should we try and do a historical baseline then?
Yeah, I mean, we've been consistently funding it. Finance sub last night did actually look at some historical sub... Finance sub last night did actually look at some historical sub-costs, and that line itself can trend anywhere from over 200 to down under 100,000. So one thing we are doing this year, though, we'll be moving those long-term sub-costs after we incur them into the schools, into the locations where the individual actually worked, to kind of show more true reflection of a building's cost instead of that a district level.
Any other questions? Surge, Tom?
Did we pin down February 4 as the public, as the date for the public hearing on the budget? Is that locked in?
I think it's later on the agenda.
I think it's next page.
Right after this, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Any others? Evaluation sub, anything?
Uh, no, we're meeting...
Next week.
22nd. 22nd.
Policy sub, anything? Curriculum sub?
Curriculum subcommittee met?
There you go, sorry!
That's okay. We did meet. We met with Tom Landers and Sue Bertrand over the educational opportunities changes. And we have another meeting, we haven't scheduled it, but in a future meeting, we'll be talking about honors-level courses at the high school. So it was a good first meeting.
Awesome. Good to hear. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Moving on to ongoing business. I know on the 10th, you talked about meeting schedules coming up. The recommendation is to move the meeting scheduled for January 28th to Wednesday, January 22nd. The purpose of that meeting would be to receive the presentation of proposed FY '21 school department budget. The school committee also needs to schedule the public hearing on the budget. Holding a public hearing is a requirement from Mass. General Law. The date proposed is Tuesday, February 4th, with a snow date of Thursday, February 6th. We just need consensus. Is everybody okay with those dates?
Do we meet in this room?
Yes.
Your snow date is middle school conferences, like, just what, what's that meant?
Did you hear that, honey? You have to go.
I'll be in too. Hopefully we'll leave one.
So for the emergency date, why don't we put it earlier then, like 5? The snow date?
To the 1st.
Okay, to start at 5.
To start at 5, okay. Okay, yes, Tom?
Just for clarity, on the 4th, it'll be at 6:30?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so if we agree to this, the 28th meeting disappears.
Correct.
And the meeting on the 4th, is that like a regular meeting, or we just show up and people ask us questions?
We should, that's pretty much what it is. So Marty and Tom will present, Marty, Tom typically, maybe the chair of the finance sub, will do a quick presentation to the public, 15, 20 minutes, then the public can ask whatever questions they want to ask, yes.
Okay, so it really is a very limited thing for this group? And it's more just, please bring your questions? And if nobody has questions, then it's very quick, yes?
Yes, Tom?
Just add, we do usually allow for the committee members, after the public hearing, if there's questions you have that either weren't answered on the 22nd, after you've had two weeks to digest all the information, to ask for clarifying information or better understanding of something that maybe wasn't clear when we presented on the 22nd.
So it is appropriate for the committee to ask questions at the public hearing?
After the public hearing is when we normally, usually the public hearing is just for the public to come and either ask questions, to make comments in regards to the request. And then, once the hearing is closed, then the committee is usually given an opportunity for more dialogue, either to discuss some of the things that were brought up in the public hearing, or ask for clarification, or discuss the budget itself.
And then, we would be, would you be expecting a vote that night, yes?
No.
No?
We normally wait until the following meeting, which would be our regular scheduled meeting on February 11th, which is when we would then plan a vote to either accept or change or to finalize the FY '21 budget.
Okay. Just kind of remember being in the calf in the old high school, voting right after the budget hearing.
Yes, we've, we've kind of added some time in between.
Is there any, so the 5th and 6th, I won't be in town, which I'm hoping for no snow days. Is there any issue with, you know, obviously, do we have enough folks for the meeting? I'm assuming. Obviously, I'm not going to be here, so we'll just be down one. Okay. Hopefully there is no snow day.
Hopefully.
Do we need a quorum for the public hearing?
I don't know.
We do, okay. Just clarifying. All right. Consensus on those dates? Good, good. Put it down. Thanks, Diane. Thanks, Tom. Back to the SOIs discussion. So we kind of discussed what the issues are on the SOIs. We're going to have tours available for public officials, two of them coming up. Please take advantage of them yourselves as well, if you have not. The elevator at Glenbrook is a sight to see. So, be nice to see it. How would all the storage stuff? So I guess consensus for Marty and the team to continue to work on the SOIs until we hear otherwise?
I think.
Okay. We have three overnight field trip requests?
Three overnight field trip requests. One is a preliminary approval, and the other are final approvals. So just as a refresher, overnight field trips require preliminary approval, which usually comes to you about a year in advance, and then, and as best we can. And then that preliminary approvals signal the trip organizers that they can go ahead and begin to make arrangements and make reservations. So the first one is a preliminary approval for Lyrix to travel to Austria in 2021. The details and objectives of the trip as they currently stand are on the form, so that's the first one for your consideration.
Is there a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the preliminary request to secure prices and make arrangements for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Austria in April 2021.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is there a call for vote? All in favor?
The next, I'm not sure which order appears on your agenda, the next one we get is a prelim, or is a final overnight field trip request for approval to allow a Long Meadow High School Spain trip. This is over February vacation. Trip leader Pat McGowan bringing a group to historical destinations in Spain. And so we're seeking your final approval on this. I will say that Dr. Paul Dockerly, he's good about watching State Department advisories to be sure that there are no warnings that would prevent our students from traveling. We would err on the side of caution, and so families know that, but, so know that that's always sort of in our back pocket if we had to cancel trip for safety or security reasons. But this would, we're seeking your final approval on the overnight field trip request to Madrid, Spain, February 12th to February 21st, 2020.
Is there a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Spain on Friday, February 14th, 2020, through Sunday, February 23rd, 2020.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
What's our policy, do we ever have a, like, what's a reasonable student to chaperone ratio? I just didn't expect them to be this high, to be honest with you.
On which one?
On both of them.
Because the one, I was just doing the math myself. One was what, 1 to 11? This one's 1 to 9?
Yeah, and 1 to 9 seems high to me. 1 to 11 seems really high.
She was supposed to be 1 to 10, according to your policy.
So is this not within policy, then? The one we already voted on? There's a rate in pol, rate at policy now?
This is a preliminary. There's 44 students. They anticipate might go, but I'm guessing if they get close enough and they find out that there are 44, they'll add another chaperone.
They usually don't get all 40 to go.
Yeah. But preliminary, we're a year out. We don't really know how many kids will be going.
Okay. And same thing with this, this one?
That one's in February, so that should...
Oh, this is really coming up, then? Okay.
What is that one?
It's like 9 to 1, like...
It's 9?
9 to 1, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, the second one, yeah, it was 3 to 27, yeah, it was 1 to 40.
So our policy's 10 to 1, is what it is?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and again, for, these are preliminary requests, so this is just pricing right now. Oh, this one is?
This looks like a scam.
Yeah, like in your policy.
Sorry, I was going to ask the other one.
Is that an old...
Yeah, this one is, okay.
Is that a longstanding policy, or is that, that just seems really high to me personally? I don't know whether...
These are high school kids.
I know. That seems very high.
That there ought to be more adults or fewer adults?
More adults.
More adults, gotcha.
You're going to a separate country where...
What kind's a father of little kids?
What's that?
He's a father of little kids. When they're 18, it's...
You're getting a father of little kids.
1 to 10 is fine.
Somebody who knows reality of 14 to 18-year-olds. Is that, is that, like, how long has that policy been around?
I can't...
I was just wondering.
Yeah, forever.
In some high schools, it's 15 to 1.
I got it. Some, some places, some people do things I don't agree with, you know? You kind of look at this and that doesn't, I mean, whether you agree with it or not, I mean, I get it. They just might not have parents who are able to go do this, too, so I'm kind of looking at it from our town, because we are the school committee of Long Meadow, that this may be... My personal gut is that's low. My gut. But I was just wondering, I just wanted to know for my own...
If that's, if that is something that the committee wanted reviewed.
I definitely need something to discuss.
Yeah, we can check other...
Have we ever had issues on any of these trips?
Look at this.
Anybody?
Not to the, I mean, you know, anytime you have teenagers gathered together in one place, there's issues, right? But not to the, not to the level where we feel like we need to, we've needed to change, you know, chaperone limits or anything like that, at least in my limited time. But they are teenagers, you're right.
My guess, Jamie, is if people are uncomfortable with it, they don't let their kids go.
Yep, but it's on here is...
Right, like, I mean, it was pretty clear when, I mean, my kids have gone to Sweden, Japan, right? Like, they're very clear about who the chaperones are and how many there are going to be. And if you're uncomfortable with that, your kid doesn't go.
She has unsavory information.
Right.
But what if they really wanted to go, you know, and they just weren't happy? You know what I mean? And like, not, hey, that's, that's an interesting issue. I was just wondering, I think we should look at the policy personally. I'm fine with the...
Is that something you want?
I mean, this is what it is. I mean, these people are going on this trip now. I'm talking for future trips. That seems low to me.
Yeah, I'm fine looking at it.
This costs more, but go ahead, go look at it.
Policy sub?
I'm not on policy, have fun.
Yeah, so I...
It's okay to pay more, as long as you're not on the news. I mean, you don't want to be on the news. I'll pay whatever, not to be on the news.
Silence! I'm calling order here. First, yes, policy sub, we'll take a look at that. Second, Suzie, yes, you have a relevant point.
There is a, there's a difference in the dates that were on the form and what's here in the motion, so I think we need to amend the motion because it's my understanding that the field trip actually does leave on the 12th, not the 14th.
Would you like to amend the motion?
I will amend the motion to read the field trip request, approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Spain.
Wait a second, hold on. Procedurally, it was passed...
No, we didn't vote, we had a discussion.
Amended, okay.
Right, we're amending it to read instead of February, Friday, February 14th, 2020, Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, through Sunday, February 23rd, 2020.
No, it's the 21st.
21st, my, okay.
12 to the 21st.
12 to the 21st.
What's on here is the alternate dates, not the actual dates.
Right, sorry. So Friday, the 21st.
So we have amended motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Where you're voting on the motion of the amendment. All in favor? Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, we're voting on amendment. Okay, no discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we're voting on the motion as amended. Any further discussion? Say none, call for vote. All in favor? Hasta luego.
And then finally, New England Key Club District Educational Conference for members of the Long Meadow High Key Club. This one is closer to home, Springfield, Massachusetts. Overnight field trip request, April 3, 4, 5, 2020, for about 100 members of the New England Key, or Long Meadow High Key Club.
Is there a motion?
Are they staying overnight in Springfield?
I think they stay overnight, yeah, so it's, they have activities into the wee hours, I think, yeah.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent, the school committee approve the overnight field trip requests for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Springfield, Mass. Friday, April 3rd, 2020, through Sunday, April 5th, 2020.